Let's open the meeting.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome to the city of St. Paul Park, regular council meeting for May 5th, 2025. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the April 21st, 2025 regular council meeting and waive the reading of the same.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Items from the public.
I didn't see anybody on there.
No, seeing nobody, we will move forward to the consent agenda. Item number three. Tonight on the consent agenda, we will be acknowledging the receipt of the commission minutes for Parks and Rec from April 10th, approving payment of the bills, Resolution 1742B, designating depositories, that is naming our banks, accepting the resignation of our police chief effective May 31st, 2025, and approve the proposal from ABDO Financial Solutions for a Public Works Position Classification and Compensation Study. And that's the consent agenda this evening.
Is there an opportunity to ask about what some of them are about?
If you want to pull any item, you can.
I don't necessarily want to pull it, but I'd like to know what they're about because I hadn't heard anything about. I don't know what the approved proposal for ABDO Financial is about.
All right, well, if I can give a second, we can go into discussion. I have a first.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
A second.
I have a second. All right, discussion?
Yeah, I just, I don't know what it's about at all, other than seeing it on this piece of paper.
Kevin?
Yeah, let Kevin explain it because Kevin explained it to me where I could understand it, so.
Well, sure. So, Mr. Mayor, I could just read the memo that was in the packet. It said, "The study will review current position descriptions, analyze positions, evaluate positions according to 2025 market wage data, evaluate positions for internal consistency, and to address future hiring needs." The study will include recommendations and procedures for incorporating new reorganized positions into the compensation system in the future. That's about it.
So it's essentially the same thing that we did for Jessica Danberg. This is more extensive.
This is, this is more extensive, right?
Yes.
And I think, and I think the idea is the Public Works Supervisor wanted to look at like future hires and getting a different tiered system. And right, and this is a good year to do it, and it is in the budget. It was in the budget from last year. And it looks at different positions, again, moving forward, hiring somebody new, and getting like a tiered system into the contract. And the contract is open currently, and so it's, it expires at the end of this year. So there'll be a new Public Works Union contract approved for 2026, so that's why this is before the council at this point.
I know that upon Tony Brinkman's promotion to the supervisor of Public Works, that there was an opening that was allowed to be filled. Where does that fall into what this is about?
Well, that'll, that'll all be figured out once we get, they get the study done. Also, we can only, it's to my understanding that these studies can only be done during open contract times, and we're going into contracting negotiations, so not only does our Public Works Supervisor want to have the best information available to him and our city staff, since we are losing our city administrator, we want them to have the best information available going into contract negotiations and see where we stand. It's all about reorganizing this city and figuring out how we move forward in the best possible way. So one of the tools given to us is the ability to get things like this done so that we can structure it so it's more favorable, not only for the employees, but for the city moving forward. But we can only do things like this at certain times of the year because of government rules. So that's kind of why we're approving this now, and it was budgeted last year.
And the first two pages of the proposal are, are the best read, so these first two pages. And then the job analysis questionnaire kind of helps you understand what they're looking for and why they're doing what they're doing.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. All right, on to item number four, old business. At this time, I will make a motion to pull the car show special event permit from the table. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Am I, should I associate with this? Okay, aye.
All right, last meeting, we tabled this because some things were incomplete and we needed to look into it a little bit further. And since Councilmember Conrad had his planned vacation, I ran around town making sure everybody had everything they needed, and the city had what we needed, and kind of good thing we did. So we've reached some agreements with some of our great nonprofits. So what I was able to find out is, for one, the permit was not turned in with a insurance waiver, current one, and a good thing because the American Legion had lost their insurance, so they did not have the same insurance as last year. So they had to scramble to get us a new insurance coverage for it, which they weren't sure if they were going to be able to do because of the new insurance company only allows them so many special event permits. So the Legion is still going to cover the insurance liability for the car show. I talked to some people in the Lions Club, and they said regardless of where it comes from, we are going to get, the special event permit is going to be $500 is my recommendation. That's $25 a week for the course of six months, given a few days for rain here and there, that's $25 a week. Four times six, take away four days for possible rain. And those are pretty much the highlights. I know also I would say, recommend, Public Works Supervisor Tony Brinkman had brought forward a question about some parking signage. We do not have the proper parking signage, so I would also recommend that, and I didn't read it in the special event permit, but he said there was some questions, so I'll just put it in the motion to not, that the city would enforce 24-hour parking ahead of time, but we don't have the proper signage to do that properly. Therefore, we're putting our police in a position to not necessarily legally be able to enforce it. So we're going to work on that going forward, but for this year to get this going, we're going to forego that. And then Public Works Supervisor Brinkman also said that we need to change some of the signage to make it legal according to our insurance company, but he assured me that he does have some of those, whatever, class five, I don't remember the exact designation of blocking off the road signs, other than just the plastic ones that we had. So he assured me he does have some of those. So with those changes to the permit, and the Lions Club once again stepping up, and the American Legion once again stepping up, I would recommend moving this forward and passage. And that's about it. So I think we have everything we need figured out for this to move forward. I believe it was May 7th, it was set to start, so the Lions are going to sponsor with sponsors 61 Cruisers, and the Legions are going to cover, so.
That's very generous.
That's what I got.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Is, do you know what's different about the barriers or road closures or what they're doing there?
No, to my understanding, it was just the, the type of signage. You need the bigger ones?
I know that, so they were going to do it last year, the plastic barriers that they, that we put up and so people can move them, so the cars can get in or out, or so the food shelf can get their people in or out for that window of time that they, they need to get down the road. And I, we had had a suggestion because there was pockets in them that's supposed to be filled with water or sand.
Right.
And they actually prepared all of those during the winter so that they would not blow around.
That's something that you'll have to get with Tony Brinkman on. I just know that at least as far as, I'm more concerned about dotting our i's and crossing our t's as far as the legality for the liability for the city. That I don't think, he didn't say we weren't going to use some of those, but in certain areas, he needed the bigger ones for liability issues, so that's all that I know. So that's where we're at. I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for the car show.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. All right, on to item number five. New business, city administrator search. Bart Fisher from David Drown and Associates. He's going to give us a presentation on where we're at and how to move forward.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, council members. Thanks for having me here tonight. And thank you for the opportunity to help find the next city administrator, help you all find the next best fit for the city administrator of St. Paul Park. You have a few documents in your packet tonight that I want to just touch base on and actually get approval on. But the first one was a memo to all of you, just kind of explaining a few things. The next one is the draft profile and job advertisement that we put together. Item number three was the job description, and then item number four was the timeline, search timeline and scope of work. So if you're all right with it, we'll walk through each one of those. Really, my goal tonight is to get feedback and/or answer any questions you might have on those. And, and then at the end of the, end of my presentation or your questions and feedback, we'll, I'll have you actually approve those so we can even start posting as of tomorrow the positions. So before I dive in, does anybody have any questions right up front, or should I?
Any questions for Bart?
Dive right in, all right. So, thank you. The first document is the city administrator profile and job advertisement. We put this together based on the information that we received from, from staff, as well as the conversations that I had with a few staff folks and some of you in regards to the desired attributes that you wanted to see in the next administrator. And then also, the document is just, it's, it's our opportunity, your opportunity to provide like a summary and a profile of the community for interested candidates so that they are aware of, I guess you could say, the community, they have some familiarity with, with, I hate to say like what they're getting into, but kind of what they're getting into, right? So, and what they can expect. So with that, I'll stop talking about the profile. If, hopefully you had a chance to review it. Do you have any feedback, any questions? Maybe I will say one other thing. The goal would be to, if you have any changes, we can certainly make those between tonight and tomorrow. But the goal would be to get this posted tomorrow and start recruiting for the position. So does anybody have any questions or feedback on the profile?
Any questions? Well-written.
Nope, looked good to me.
Good to go. All right, thank you. Appreciate that, all right. So the next document was, is the job description. We put this together again based on the information we gathered. We do a number of different city administrator searches throughout Minnesota, so we're able to include a number of the aspects from the role of a city administrator into this document and then tailor it to St. Paul Park as best as we knew how. So again, I'll step aside, and if you have any questions, thoughts, feedback on the job description.
Nope, I thought it was good. I mean, I do know that you reached out to every single council member and got a bunch of feedback on hopefully what their expectations were, you know, wants and things like that. So, and I'm hoping that most people kicked in their two cents, and you know, it looks like you were able to do a great job at kind of bringing that all together, so.
Yes.
I'd just like to say appreciate your efforts to, to reach out, to, to talk to people. It was greatly appreciated.
Sure, you're welcome. Yes, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to all of you. It makes our job definitely easier. I mean, I, I live up the road in Cottage Grove, so I'm very familiar with St. Paul Park. Actually, I used to work in the city of Newport several years ago. But still, being able to talk to, to folks here in the community makes a big difference for us, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, Mayor, council members, I'm going to walk through, I don't want to take a ton of your time, but I do want to walk through the timeline and scope of work, just so you are aware of where we're going from here, I guess. So I'll do that as quickly as I possibly can, but I do like to touch on a number of different points here. So, well, based on the fact that you were good to go with the job description and the, and the profile, we'll get that posted tomorrow. It'll be posted for about a month, and we'll be out there recruiting heavily for the position. I was actually talking to Kevin earlier. I was, actually had the opportunity to be at the Minnesota City County Managers Association Conference the end of last week, and actually I was able to mention this position to a few folks. And I actually had some people coming up to me asking about the position, and then over the weekend, I actually had some communications from some other folks that were interested in the position. So I'm going to take that as an encouraging sign that before it's even posted, there's already interest in the position. So, of course, I can't guarantee anything, but I'll, I'll say that, that's encouraging, very much so, so at this point. So, so we'll have that posted for about a month. As actually applications come in, I will be screening those against your desired attributes and then the, just the basic, you know, the job description, the basic duties of the position. That's not to get rid of quality folks at all. That's not my job. My job is to get rid of those folks that don't even meet the minimum qualifications or your desired attributes in the next administrator. Usually, we get that down to about eight to 12 folks. We call them semifinalists at that point. We will run them through a, what we call a work personality index. It's a lot like a Myers-Briggs personality, but it actually focuses in on how they, their personality within a workplace setting. So it's a good tool for you all to be able to evaluate candidates. After that, we do actually have them do a video interview. Clients love it and candidates don't because they get put under a lot of pressure. This is all explained to them, but it's timed, and they do not get an opportunity to go back and redo it. So they're under a little bit of pressure, and you can just see them in, in that setting on a video screen. I understand that. But, or you know, taped videos, interviews, but it does give you again another tool in the toolbox to evaluate folks. About a week before, right now, we have scheduled June 23rd. I'll provide you with all of the information we've gathered on the candidates. You're able to review those. And on June 23rd, then, we'd come, I'd come back, walk you through a process to narrow those folks down to. And I strongly recommend actually no more than five because if you interview more than five on interview day, it gets to be a really long day, and it actually almost becomes more counterproductive than if you, if you do more than that. So, and oftentimes, I, you know, through a refining process and the process I'll walk you through to get to that point, we can get it down to five. So, once those five are chosen, then we start doing a comprehensive background check on, on all of those folks. And then we also do reference checks on them. And these aren't just calling their employer, former employers, and saying, you know, they worked here from here, you know, from this time to this time. These folks have to be willing to talk about, again, their work style, their management style, leadership style, how they, how they operate and function in a work setting. And I will insert here just really quick, I'm actually out of town the, the first week of July, and so I've already asked, I've got my colleague Liza Donabauer at DDA will be doing the reference checks. She's really good at this. She's well-respected in this industry, and she'll do a really good job of contacting those folks, talking through that with them and summarizing that information for you. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Then we do run them through intellect profile, which measures verbal reasoning, mathematical and logical reasoning, reasoning and just overall mental aptitude. Then again, at least one week before the final interviews, which we have scheduled now for July 16th, that will get all of that information to you, so you can review that before interviews. And then on July 16th, we would bring these folks in for an interview. And then the goal on July 16th would be for you to come to some kind of agreement on a person, and then I can assist with, over the next couple of days usually it takes to negotiate an agreement with them, a contract with them based on the parameters that you provide to me. A little bit of going back and forth sometimes, but the goal of that is being as if, we want to make sure you get the right fit, right? But we also want to make sure we're moving efficiently and effectively because we don't want a big gap between when Kevin leaves and when the new person comes in, and if they're already in a city administrator role, they're going to have to give some kind of notice to their employer, and so we're trying to make that as quick as possible, but at the same time, make sure it's the right fit for all of you. So, I, I think, a couple more things real quick. I think what I need from you tonight is just to confirm that, that June 23rd works just for the selection of finalists. And that would be about a one hour, I mean, it might seem like it could take longer, but honestly, we usually get that done in an hour to an hour and a half.
That's what I'm looking, is that a Monday?
You know, I should have put the actual day of the week on there.
That'd be better for me.
Yep.
Monday's better for me.
All right, we're good.
Is that good?
Yep.
I'll work with Kevin to get that set up. And then the other one would be that July 16th, and that's going to be a whole day. Or, you know, I would say block off most of your day for that.
The Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday.
Oh, boy.
You got two months to plan.
You want to move it to that 14th?
What was the other date?
Does that matter? Two days matter? July 14th versus the 16th?
It's a city planning meeting. The 14th is, July 14th. What was the first date that you suggested?
July 16th.
July 16th.
Which is a Wednesday.
That's during the day?
Yeah, you're going to, essentially during the day, yeah, morning through evening.
Monday would be better, but I'll work, I can work it out. I'll figure it out. If you can give me morning or afternoon?
It's probably going to be
The whole day?
Most of the day, unfortunately.
I'll make it work.
Okay. I mean, we can.
Well, we could do it, we could do it the 14th because the planning meeting isn't until the evening.
Okay.
Would the 14th work better? Because I can, I can manage anything.
Of that week? July 14th. Yeah, I have two meetings in the evening, but my day is good.
Okay.
14th sounds better.
14th?
During the day.
During the day, yes. Block off pretty much that whole day from essentially eight, nine o'clock in the morning until evening. So, yep, we can do the 14th. The only caveat I'll, I'll ask is we may, it's kind of compressed to try to get some of those like reference checks and things done. We, we may not be able to get you the information on like Monday, the 7th. It might be like Tuesday, the 8th, or Wednesday, the 9th. I'll just make that caveat. So you might have like a, a day or two less to review the information, if that makes sense.
Yes, we understand.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, all right, very good. The other thing that we'll, I just want to mention really quick that we'll discuss on June 23rd is what you wanted, like kind of, how you want the day to look on the, now July 14th? Meaning clearly there's going to be a panel interview with all of you as the council. Other options would include like a staff panel, a community panel, sometimes having, like, I'll say sometimes having even a community member take these folks around like one-on-one for a community tour. You'd be surprised, like when they're in a less formal setting, what they'll say to somebody that, when they're, you know, going around in a car with them, getting a tour of the community. So I guess my challenge to you is before the 23rd, maybe start thinking of some of those things that you might want to do for that day. And we can finalize that on the 23rd for July 14th, if that makes some sense.
Got it.
I'm sorry, I did skip over one other thing. When, so when there's, when they go from being semifinalists to finalists, and we notify them of this, they actually, that does become public information. Their candidacy is public information. We put together the allowed biographical information for each of the candidates, provide that to you, so if you get a, you know, public information request from a newspaper, a resident, or anything like that, you can just hand them that sheet of paper and you're good to go, so. All right, that was a lot of information. I think I'm done. Does anybody have any questions?
Any more questions for Bart?
No, it's kind of an evolving process, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. I'll keep you informed along the way, too.
I couldn't print out that stuff. It was, made the file too big.
All right, well, would we need an official motion, or do you got what you need?
I would prefer if you would actually provide an official motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council, pro, city administrator profile, job description, salary range, scope of work, and the timeline to move forward with our search.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bart.
We'll be in touch, certainly.
Thank you. All right, reports from the council. Councilmember Swenson is excused. Councilmember Hagerty, public safety.
No Public Safety Commission meeting since our last city council meeting, so no updates. We are still looking for two more members, though, for that commission of public safety.
All right. I had somebody asking about a stop sign today, I sent them your way. See if they join in.
All right, cool.
Good. Councilmember Conrad, planning.
The last planning commission meeting was canceled due to lack of agenda. The next meeting is May 12th at 7:00 PM here.
Thank you, Councilmember Conrad. Councilmember Whipred.
I'm excited, have a lot here. I just want to thank everybody for coming out to our Art and Garden Party. It was, it was a pretty good success. We could have not done it without our Public Works. They were awesome. They really went above and beyond, and so I'm pretty happy about that. Apple Valley Home Depot, they, they donated a lot of stuff in honor of Andy. Sean and Cory Alaska of Alaska Gardens, they donated all the flowers around the sign. The Masons, they sold hot dogs. The fire department was there helping us with the bouncy house donated by South Suburban Rental. We had about 15 vendors, they all said they were very satisfied, so that was nice. I want to thank you, Mayor, and Councilman Hagerty for coming, helping plant. I know you didn't, but you were very busy, that's okay. Our Pullman Kindergarteners and teachers came and planted. Basic Needs Food Market was there, and that's, that's who all our produce is going to, is Basic Needs Food Market now. And next, we are working with the Masons to get some movie in the parks on the calendar, and our next meeting is May 8th at 6:00. And we're still looking for some members. We're three strong, four strong, that's it. We need some more.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Whipred Hemmixon. As for myself, we've just been dealing with all these hirings and some other stuff and still continuing to work towards some potential small developments and just moving on, so that's all I have this evening. Nothing further before this council, this meeting is adjourned.